I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll have approval of minutes from the previous meeting of February twenty seventh. Has everybody had a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Yep, so we need a motion.
Any, any corrections or any additions to the minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, then we have a second?
I'll say.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, that's been approved. Uh, do we have any old business? I think. Here comes Jenny. We're just getting, we're just getting started.
That's good for Pam and her reminders.
So, we, uh, we just approved the minutes. And, uh, now, I asked if there was any old business. So, do we have any old business? If we don't have any, then we'll go ahead and proceed right into the, uh, public hearing. So, I'll call agenda item number four, which is a public hearing on case number ZC twenty twenty five oh one. This is a rezoning amendment requesting a change, uh, from present R one, single-family residential to an I one industrial district. Uh, before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask the planning commission members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from the hearing, uh, discussing and voting on this case because they are, or their relatives own property in the notification area or have a conflict of interest or a particular bias in this matter. None?
No.
So, we'll let, we'll let the minute show that there is, uh, there is none. And I declare, we do have a quorum. I'll, I'll also ask the attending, uh, attending this public hearing to review the provided ground rules. Did that, did the public, do they have the ground rules?
I forgot to make copies. I have a copy, it's there somewhere.
I think I've got one of the left on.
Yeah. Sorry, I have, I'm meeting right before this one.
Okay. According to the, uh, recording secretary, a notice for this hearing was published in the official city newspaper, Tri-County Tribune, on October sixteenth, twenty twenty five. In addition, notices were mailed to the applicant and nine real property owners of record in the area of notification on October sixth, twenty twenty five. Unless there's evidence to the contrary from anyone present, I'll declare the proper notification has been given. Although we do not encourage such communications, I will ask the commission if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communications prior to this hearing. If so, please share them with all the members of this commission. No, no comments. Okay. Uh, I'll call the zoning administrator, Pam Watson, to provide us with the background report on this case.
So, we received a application for the change of zoning from Midwest Energy. Um, they have purchased the land from Cornwell and wanting to put up their headquarters here in town to better services, um, out town and the surrounding areas. Um, the property is currently zoned as single-family residential and for what they are wanting to do, um, we have to rezone it to neither commercial or industrial, um, for them to be able to build their building and have their business there. The, we propose to have the zoning changed to industrial because it's better fit for, um, what their, their business plans are. Um, as I put it on my report, currently, there is no sewer main or water main that run down that way. We are working with the engineer to get that, um, get that done so where we can extend it to there, there can connect to it. Um, the, they have been in contact with our electric department as far as getting the electricity over to them. And if you look in your packet, I have attached the seventeen questions that we are required to fill out. I did not find anything within those seventeen questions measure that would be harmful to the surrounding property or the, um, any problem if the zoning were to be changed. So, do you guys have any questions or anything that you would like to talk about as far as those seventeen questions goes?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, so, and that's all I have as far as the, um, my report to the board members.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I assume the applicant is here.
Yeah.
I'll request that they come up and make a presentation, uh, on their request in response to the zoning administrator's report.
Okay, I'm Brett Albert, I'm, uh, operations manager with Midwest Energy, uh, in Great Bend. I'm not sure what you want me to go over, but, uh, I think you all have a picture of what we're thinking we were going to do. Not sure about the building setbacks yet on the, uh, backside of the lot there where we proposed to put the building. I'm not sure if we're far enough off or if we have to be off of that back there in that back corner. I know it shows, did they get this picture?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't believe these gate, I think we will have just one drive instead of two drives. Now, I think it'll be just one drive in the middle, uh, a larger one, so we can make the turning radius with our, uh, line trucks and poles that would have to be pulled in and out of there without tail swing and stuff like that. I had just put this as speculative on the sewer because I wasn't sure where it was gonna come from. I didn't know if it was gonna come from, uh, the north or if it's gonna come from the, uh, east for sure. Haven't heard that, I just put that as a proposed, it's, that's not firmed up either, but the rest is, is there. It's a two-acre lot, our building will be sixty by ninety on there. And that whole lot will be rocked, it won't be grass weeds or anything else, it'll be, it'll be rocked. There will be some pole racks where we'll have poles staged for when storms roll through or just normal maintenance of holes down in this southeast area, uh, of our territory.
Will the, will the area be fenced?
The area is gonna be fenced, yes, with a six-
For security?
Six, six-foot fence with a three-wire-
Okay.
Barbed wire on top. Plan on having some lighting out here on our, uh, drive and then lighting, uh, up here by the building to illuminate out here. Uh, there will be, sometimes that we will be working at night. Uh, there will be some, uh, activity over there at night if we have calls or something with storms that roll through or whatever. Uh, there will be some night activity. Uh, we don't intentionally, uh, you know, cause a lot of noise or disrupt, but you're gonna have big trucks, diesel trucks and, and some, uh, backup alarms and stuff like that that could be going on through the, through the wee hours of the night, so.
Is there, can you, would you be able to consider, I mean, as far as lighting goes, if that'd be a down light or so that there's no glare, uh, to the surrounding areas?
We would, we could, we could do that, I mean, if there's a request for that, but if, if we would need, at some time, we would need some probably flood-type lighting over here to light up so we could see if we're, if we're loading out in the middle of night, but we could have those on switches, certainly, so it wouldn't be constant. But other than that, yeah, it'll be just like a regular street light. Yeah.
Is there, is there gonna be any consideration maybe in the future to, uh, make any improvements to the roadway? Or is, are you satisfied with the dirt road?
At this point in time, we were satisfied with the dirt road. We hadn't even, we haven't discussed any road improvements, no.
Well, that'd probably be something that they have to work out with the city anyway.
Well, um, that would probably fall on the city anyway, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and it, it probably is gonna be depending on how many trucks-
Yeah.
Turn, turn it in, whether how much maintenance the city's gonna require, which is-
Are you-
Again, I have a city.
Yeah.
As far as the vehicle-
Again, that's all shit.
Yeah, so the city, yeah.
As far as the vehicle, um, that you will have going in and out, are you talking like the big semi? Are you talking like what we have here as far as the bucket, bucket truck goes?
It would be a, a big, your, like your big bucket truck, and if you got a pole truck here, I, I don't remember what you have, but we have, we'll have a big pole truck and a, and a bucket truck and a pickup stationed.
Stationed, and then you'd be coming in and out with poles on a truck occasionally and-
Occasionally, yes.
Equipment, yeah.
Okay.
But a lot of times in a smaller outpost like this, we will, we will just haul-
What you need.
What we need from, out of Great Bend and on our trailer and truck. But if there's gonna be a big project down here or something, we might have a semi coming down there and unloading-
Okay.
Full pole, you know?
Sure.
Whole, uh, truckloads of poles and stuff.
Yeah, I was just thinking like, make sure the city has the right width of culvert-
Yes.
Right, yeah.
To get you in and out.
Yeah, and that's what I was, I think we were wanting like a fifty-foot gate, but I was gonna ask for like a sixty-foot culvert so it goes past our gate radius, you know, stuff like that. It will be a metal building, I don't know if I, we'll do that.
Any other questions?
How far back does that two acres go?
Two hundred and ninety-five foot, it's a two hundred and ninety-five foot square.
About to the end of Merlin's property?
Just about.
Just before the greenhouse property?
Nah, not that far back.
No, it looks to me like there's a pond right here.
There's a drawl right there.
Yeah, what he had is a pond, looks to be about right at the end of Merlin's property.
So, the, like, I mean, the sewer and water have to be worked out with the city, right? I mean, it-
Yes, so-
It looks like, I mean, this proposed line would have to have an easement.
Yes, um, we're not quite sure, we're waiting on the engineer to get back with us as far as it, where, is that gonna where, be where the sewer line come in or is it gonna come in from the east? Um, we haven't got that information back.
And would that just be a service line or a main sewer?
It will have to be the main and then they'll have to come meet the main.
Okay.
So.
And that, the city had requested probably getting some easement across to us one way or another so we can get it down into the next, next place, wherever it's gonna, wherever they deem it needs to go. And we're okay with that.
Yeah. Are you gonna have someone at this building basically all the time or not?
Yes, there will, there will be a crew. Not twenty-four hours a day, but there will be a crew reporting there five days a week.
Okay.
Hopefully a four-man crew.
Yeah. Okay, does anybody have any other question? Okay, uh, thank you.
All right.
Uh, we'll now, uh, this is a public hearing, so, uh, we'll open this up to pu- the public portion of the hearing and ask if there's any members of the public who wish to speak, uh, on this case.
Do you guys have any questions, concern, additional, um, information that you would like to know regarding this?
Are they gonna keep the road up?
Yes, we'll have to make sure that now that it's gonna be more traffic going down through that road, you know, so it's gonna, um, we'll have to pay more attention to it because it's gonna get run down quicker, so.
Especially when it rains.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I-
He's probably mad to have to do that.
We might talked about rebuilding that road up a little bit, but that will have to come from the council. I have talked to the street supervisor and, or he's not opposing to building that road up just a little bit and make it a little bit more heavy traffic, you know, that it can do, handle heavy traffic down that road.
There are some pretty big semis that go down that road all in pretty-
All the time, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is not a terrible road.
Right.
Mid-Kansas ag all the time going down.
Yeah, mid-Kansas ag up down that road all the time.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a bad road, I mean, it, it can handle the traffic.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe more rocks just put down to where the low spot, because the low spot's right in front of their house.
Right.
Um, when it rains, the, the water kind of pool there, so I was telling Jason that maybe we can build it up to where it drain toward First Street a little bit and put more rocks into a, it won't, you know, deteriorate so quick with the extra traffic that we're gonna have with a bigger vehicle. So, yes, we'll, we'll make sure that that get taken care of more often than it is now, so, yes.
See, me like every time I get, they forecast rain, he comes in there and grades it.
So, the Ohio township helps us out as far as grading go, any dirt road-
Well, he grades it every day, every time, just before rain.
Yeah, just before rain.
Like, he got rain forecast for the weekend, he's already graded it.
Yeah, so we'll have to, we'll have to get with him on that just to make sure we're on the same page as far as the schedule and the weather and all that goes, so.
The only guy I've got a battle, like, a puddle up in front of my driveway.
Mm.
When I push it to the south, west, or west.
Okay.
I think you just tell Carl, it's Carl's doing it, and then he'll, he'll take care of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He's probably one of the best-
That's the way it is.
Best graders in the county, yeah.
Water runs down outside the culvert.
Right, yeah, we'll look into that and we'll, we'll get that corrected and make it better.
Anybody, anybody else have any?
Could I see some plans?
Yeah.
I don't know exactly what's going on.
Can I have the, it's yours since you're, mine's a little smaller. So, here's the dirt road on West Street. Here's the, the proposed, um, area that they are asking to change. Their building would be right here toward the back of the lot, okay? And your property is standing right here, down the way. Yeah, and that's what, this is what all it's gonna go into, this, um, area. And this line right here, that's the fence that's gonna go all around it.
Now, need a forty-foot gate, don't you?
But incorporating, uh, the industrial park on both sides.
That could be better.
No, just this side, yep, just that side.
Well, I was kinda wondering because I'm retiring at the end of the month and I was told that, uh, if it becomes part of the industrial park, my insurance will not be the same as a residential insurance.
Yeah, but your property will not change, your property will stay residential. Yeah.
Okay, um, any other, any other comments, questions? Do we have any written communications or petitions from the public that's been submitted to us?
No.
Okay. Does the, uh, applicant wish to respond to any of the public comments?
We just, we, we wanna be good neighbors, we, we, we're not wanting to tear up the neighborhood or the community or anything. We, we're, we're, uh, trying to help better your community, bring, bring some tax dollars into your community.
That's true, yeah.
Be a good neighbor, so, we have no-
You better be, or I'll come knockin' on your door.
I'll warn him.
We live there so we didn't have to have neighbors.
Oh, yeah.
Is any of your crew thinking about relocating?
There is possibly, we're, we're in conversation with a couple of people that might, uh, relocate. Uh, one of them that might wanna come down, lives halfway in between Great Bend and, and, uh, St. John currently, so, um, we don't have a set crew number yet, we, we want four people, so we're, we're, we haven't applied or, uh, posted any positions yet, but we're in contact with the one person that knew we were in here, and he lives in between, so he probably won't relocate, but I would say, well, I would think a-
Possible.
Possibility, yeah.
That's a plus.
I don't know how housing is or anything in town here, but.
Eating yogurt in there.
Some housing being built.
Yeah.
Another problem, I just, I can't speak to that because it varies so much, you know? Line workers are kinda hard to, to come by now, it's just, it's a tough gig, so.
Okay, well, uh, hearing, uh, no further public comments, uh, I'll hereby close the public portion of this hearing. Uh, there will be no further comments unless the commission wishes to ask questions to clarify information. The planning commission will now deliberate, uh, the request. Uh, we've already looked at the seventeen factors, uh, that's been provided, that are found in the rezoning, uh, the rezoning report. Each factor will be considered and our collective opinion will be summarized. So, with that, having, having considered the, uh, evidence of the hearing and all the factors, that, would anybody like to make a motion, one way or the other? To approve or deny the request?
Well, make a motion, we approve the, we request to rezone it.
Uh, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. So, uh, all those in favor of, uh, approving the rezoning, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say, uh, no? I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm an aye, okay? All right. So, do I need to, do I need to go through the protest petition?
No.
I mean, there is a process if anybody wants to protest our decision. Uh, but this will go, uh, this will go in front of the city commission? Do you have a date on that?
Yes, that is going to be on November, November fourth. So, this will be presented to the council at the council meeting on November fourth and they will have, I will have the ordinance ready, and then if they pass that ordinance, then it's gonna take the effect after I publish that ordinance. And then you guys will, I'll email your copy and then I'll email you the, um, certificate that said this has been rezoned, so.
So, the thirty-day waiting or whatever it was, we're on that now?
Yes, yeah.
So, I, I guess I will speak with you-
Yes.
In the future here, but, uh, was, was there building setbacks on the fence? Do we have to be so far off the road? Do we have to, is the building itself have to be so far off the, off the fence?
Off the fence, um, I believe toward the back, it is twenty, no, eight feet.
I know.
I know we had it at fifteen here, but I, I, I think is what I had on, on this currently, but I didn't know what the, what we had to.
I have the zoning safe on here.
I think industrial is different from residential.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, and I'm, I'm still confused, sometimes I think of other zoning regulations, but I didn't, I, I didn't think of industrial, that there was even a setback.
I don't even think, I don't think there is.
I don't think there's a setback requirement.
Not with industrial, with residential there is, but not with industrial.
And that's where I was confused on or trying to find the answer is that most of these are pertaining to, even for the commercial zone, there's a-
If you're gonna have rock all the way around the building, common sense, enough to get some equipment back there to drag it when needed, that's, that'd be the main thing, so it always looks nice.
Yeah.
Somebody want rock, it's gonna be a lot of rock, it's gonna be a lot of rock. You said a mouthful there.
So, yards requirement, minimum front yards of thirty-five feet on all sizes, abutting the street. Side yard, no minimum on the side yard, but-
That's residential.
No, I'm looking at industrial.
We're looking at industrial.
Oh, really?
Yeah, minimum side yards, no minimum requirement, but if, if a side yard is provided, it shall be not less than fifteen feet. The rear yard is no minimum requirement, but it will, shall not be less than fifteen feet if the rear yard is provided. So, yes, we'll have to have fifteen.
And that's what we had, I just wanted to double-check and make sure.
Yeah.
And it depends on where, uh, the, the city was wanting the easement for sewer also, so, that makes a little bit of-
And we will, once we get the plan back from the engineer, we will get with you and work with you on that as far as the easements goes, so that way we both can, you know, be happy, so.
So, when, when will the thirty days be up?
So, we have a protesting period of-
If I can get dirt work started or what have you.
Okay, so, you have, from today, we have fourteen days for the protesting period, so we have to wait fourteen days. Um, and then after that, once the ordinance passed, there's like a week or so for me to get it published and get it out to the public. So, I would say to be safe, you can start after- Fourteen days up to twenty. After November twentieth, you can start to be hundred percent safe.
Provided council approves it.
Yes, provide, yeah.
Which they probably will, hopefully.
So, to just do dirt, dirt- to just do dirt, dirt work, we will need building permits for dirt work?
Only if you dig.
Yes.
So we're gonna be peeling off the grass and then laying, and then just laying it, uh.
I don't know that you have to do that, right? It's only for.
I mean, it's, permits only X amount of dollars.
Yeah.
So the permit that you, the building permit that you're gonna submit for your building and your fences and stuff like that, I would just do one permit for all, including dirt works, um, the building, the fence, whatever you wanna build on it, we'll just do it all in one. Um, but if you're gonna start, obviously, you're gonna start the dirt work first. Definitely make sure you call Dig Safe.
Yep.
And all of that, so.
Okay, I'll have to get with the builder then because he's the general contractor.
Yeah.
So, you'll have to submit for the permit, so, okay.
Okay.
I'm sure I'll have a million more questions before.
That's fine, yeah, call or email anytime and that goes to you as well. If you have additional questions, um, call my office. And if I don't have the answer, I would definitely try to get one for you. Um, if you have problems later on to where, okay, they're being too loud or they're keeping you up or whatever, call us and we'll, we'll work it out. Like he said, we want everybody to be happy, so. It cannot be a party house.
It won't be a party, a party house, I guarantee you. It'll be all business if we're in the middle of night. They don't like working in the middle of night anymore than anybody else.
Anyway. He'll turn off, he'll take out his steering and he won't.
Just see the light, huh?
But boy, if he start having parties there.
No.
No, 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 no.
We better be invited.
You better be part of it.
Okay, well, uh, on our, on our agenda, we do have a work session, but we don't have any, you know, no work session. But I would like to, to start if we can to get back on a monthly, regular meeting time.
Yes, that.
Because we, we need to still work on a, um, a comprehensive plan and I don't know if you wanna make any comments on that progression.
Yeah, I have to apologize. I have so many things on the city size that we have so many projects going on that I did not have enough time to get back to it. I do apologize for not having our regular monthly meeting. Summer have been super busy for all of us, but yes, definitely we'll get back to that monthly.
Talk about, you know, I, I guess, uh, you know, since there's so much activity going on downtown and, uh, you know, I, I'd like to see an effort be made to utilize the buildings, uh, for their purpose. And I think the zoning regulations do require that down, the downtown does not have storage. And we've got some of that, and so we need to probably discuss on how we can deal with that and to create a little better sense of property owners utilizing their buildings for what their intended purpose is. So, I mean, that's just some discussions we need to talk about.
Okay.
So, yeah, if we can get back on that.
Are you guys still okay with, because right now we have it set to where it's the last month, Monday of every month? Is, uh, Monday still good for you guys?
Monday is good for me or Thursday, but any other time not.
Okay.
Thursday's usually bad for me.
Okay.
Tuesdays and Wednesdays are bad for me too.
Basketball coming up. When's Jill, we'll have junior high basketball, whenever their games are.
Okay.
What are they?
Thursdays aren't they? Yeah.
Okay.
So Monday sounds like.
Mondays?
Mondays, I don't think I have any other meetings usually, usually.
So we'll keep it at Mondays for now and then if we can change it, if we need to stop to make a motion.
Okay, so, um, we're ready to adjourn. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion about that? Okay, we got a motion to adjourn and a second. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.